Good evening. It being 6:00 PM on Monday, June 9th, 2025, I'll open the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under universal liberty and justice.
This meeting is being presented under the auspices of the Governor's Regulations for Open Meeting, and it is being recorded and will be broadcast for your viewing pleasure. First item of the agenda is reorganization of the Board. I'll open nominations for Chairman.
I nominate Tom Clebert as Chairman of the Board.
Have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Tom, congratulations. Second item would be nomination of the Vice Gia.
I'll nominate Mike Rogers.
Mark Rogers.
Second. We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And third is Clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Nominate Elaine Davies as Clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussions, any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take just a second to thank Earl for his years of service and services as Chairman over the last year for the last couple of years. Great job. So, thank you.
Great job.
Well, thank you.
And I'll second.
I'll still be here. That's why I didn't say goodbye.
Thank you. Okay, for the next item on our agenda, it's to provide some recognition for three different individuals in the town. I'm sorry, I'm one step ahead of myself already. Next item on the agenda is approval of the regular session meeting minutes for May 12th and May 19th. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes for May 12th?
I move we approve the minutes for the May 12th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Second item is approval of the May 19th regular session meeting minutes. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from the May 19th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we can do the recognition. First item on the agenda is someone I know very well, served under him when I was on the Planning Board, Paul LaFrenboise. Could you come forward? Speaking. Thanks. Tonight. Tonight, we, the Board, Webster Board of Selectmen, join together with the grateful members of our community to recognize Paul LaFrenboise for his 21 years of service to the Town of Webster. Paul LaFrenboise practices the true meaning of giving back to his community. Paul served on the Planning Board from 2004 until 2025 and spent many of those years as Chairman. Paul contributed significantly to many town projects such as the Bartlett High School renovation, PFAS water treatment plants, and the Gladys C. Kelly Public Library. He was instrumental in obtaining several grants for stormwater treatment projects to treat water prior to discharge into Webster Lake. Paul is active in the community and currently sits on the Friends of the Library Executive Board and also on the Webster Lake Association Executive Board. Paul LaFrenboise embodied all the qualities needed to be a successful Chairman. He led efficient meetings with fairness and a calm demeanor. He demonstrated knowledge, common sense, and strength of mind when it was needed, and always acted as a voice for the residents. He remained grounded and was able to guide Webster into the direction it is headed today. He will be remembered for his caring and generous personality to residents and employees within the community. The Webster Board of Selectmen proudly recognized Paul LaFrenboise upon his retirement from a successful tenure serving on the Webster Planning Board. The Webster Board of Selectmen and the community will heartily thank you for your service and dedication. We are all indebted to you for the sacrifices you have made to make the Town of Webster what it is today. The Town of Webster is honored to have you as one of their own. We thank you for your outstanding service and your commitment to the Town of Webster. Presented with pride on the ninth day of June in the year 2025. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paul.
Great job. Second item on the agenda is the recognition of Mike Dostola for service to the town. Congratulations. Thank you. Tonight, we, the Webster Board of Selectmen, join together with the grateful members of our community to recognize Michael Dostola for his 21 years of service to the Town of Webster. Mike served as a member of the Board of Health from January through May of 2004. In August of 2004, he was appointed to the Planning Board and served 21 years, many of those years as Vice Chairman. Mike contributed significantly to many town projects, including the new PFAS water treatment plants, the Bartlett High School renovation, the Gladys C. Kelly Public Library, French River Walk, and more. Mike was an asset to the Board. He demonstrated historic knowledge and passion for his town while consistently making decisions in the best interest of the residents. He will be remembered to the community for his curiosity and friendly personality. The Webster Board of Selectmen proudly recognized Michael Dostola upon his retirement from a successful tenure on the Webster Planning Board. The Webster Board of Selectmen and the community will heartily thank you for your service and dedication. The Town of Webster is honored to have you as one of their own. We thank you for your outstanding service and your commitment to the Town of Webster. Present with pride on the ninth day of June in the year 2025. Thank you. Good luck. It was a pleasure for me for working with the two of you. The next one, recognition of services for Charlotte Ginger Costin. Okay, I will read this. Tonight, we, the Webster Board of Selectmen, join together with grateful members of our community to recognize Charlotte Ginger Costin for her 23 years of service to the Town of Webster. Ginger Costin served in Uber's capacities for the town on various committees as an election worker, warden, and registrar. In 2010, she was appointed to the Board of Registitors and served 15 years until stepping down in May of 2025. During that time, from 2013 through 2016, she was also a member of the trustees of the Soldiers' Monument. Ginger put a lot of her time and effort into beautifying the Veterans Court of Honor. Charlotte Ginger Costin was a vital member of the community, helping to keep our election process smooth and transparent. She will be remembered for her beautiful plants and flowers and passion for the democratic process. The Webster Board of Selectmen proudly recognized Charlotte Ginger Costin upon her retirement from a successful tenure serving on the Webster Board of Registitors. The Webster Board of Selectmen and the community wholeheartedly thank you for your service and dedication. The Town of Webster is honored to have you as one of their own. We thank you for your outstanding service and your commitment to the Town of Webster. Presented with pride on the ninth day of June in the year 2025. Thank you, Ginger. Mr. Chairman, if I could point out real quick that the timing is eerie of us needing to pursue a new planner in the exit of two veteran members of the Planning Board. So, they're not, they're, they didn't last 20 years because they weren't bright. So, but I'm sure they'll still be there to help as we go along here. So, and as you know, there's no way to truly thank people who, you know, you know, given of themselves, you know, economically, maybe at the price of their own health, et cetera. So, there's no way to do that. We can't name a street after everybody in town, but if we could, we would. And they do have a wealth of knowledge. Yes, so I suspect they'll be gone, but not too far away, whether they like it or not. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for National Grid to install a One J O pole. Can I have a motion to move into public hearing?
I move we move into public hearing.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Aye. Do we have anybody that's representing National Grid?
Hello, I'm right here on the video call.
Okay, could you describe what's going to be happening in this One J O pole on East Main Street?
Yeah, of course. So, we're replacing pole 42 with one new 45-foot Class II pole. It's just going to be 25 feet away northeast. So, just to make room for a double entrance for like a new gas station that's going in. That's it.
Any questions? Okay. This, this public hearing is to review the National Grid's plan to install a One J O pole on East Main Street, beginning at a point approximately 280 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection on Thompson Road. And there's a map that shows where it's being placed. National Grid to replace P 42 with one new 45-foot Class II on East Main Street, approximately 25 feet northeast of its current location. This is to make room for a double entrance at the new property on 138 East Main Street, Webster, Mass. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is to discuss and make a possible vote to approve the petition from National Grid to install that One J O pole. Do we have a motion to?
I move that we approve the petition from National Grid to install One JPO pole.
Second.
I have a motion to, to install a JPO pole. Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
You have a motion and a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is discussion and possible vote to approve the change of DBA, Doing Business AS, application for ABJS RESTS LLC. The DBA name of the restaurant is changing from Ali Brihez Mexican Kitchen and Cantina to Casa Lara Tacos and Tequila on alcohol license number 08758-RS-1342. And that, the location of that restaurant is 131 Main Street, Webster, Mass. So, the only thing we're doing here is changing the Doing Business AS name of the restaurant to Cantina, to Casa Lara Tacos and Tequila. And that's just on the alcohol license. Do I have a motion to approve the change?
So, move. Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Is there anybody here representing the restaurant? I don't think so.
Unless Kelly bought it.
Pardon me?
Unless Kelly bought it.
Yeah. If there's any, any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, could I have a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
I have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the discussion and possible vote to approve the special one-day liquor license for a banquet at St. Joseph Church Parish Center located at 47 Woodcombe Street, Webster, Mass. 01570, to be held on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Do I have a motion to vote on that?
The, we have everything in terms of coverage in the, so, I move we approve the special one-day liquor license requested by St. Joseph Parish.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a discussion and possible vote to approve the special one-day liquor license for picnic on the St. Joseph Church grounds located at 53 Woodcombe Street, Webster, Mass. 01570, to be held on Sunday, June 22nd, 2025, from 11:30 to 5:00 PM. Discussion, I'm sorry, could I have a motion to approve the special one-day liquor license?
I, I move that we, make a motion that we approve the special one-day liquor license for the picnic at St. Joseph Church grounds on June 22nd.
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next item is the discussion and possible vote to approve Jeffrey Chahosty as a full member of the ZBA for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Mr. Chahosty currently serves on the ZBA as an alternate member. Is anybody on? No? Okay, could I have a motion for the vote to appoint Jeffrey Chahosty?
I move we appoint Jeffrey Chahosty as a full member of the ZBA for a three-year term, ending in June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Any discussion or vote?
I know he's a current alternate member, and I think he would be a good choice for the next spot, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. The next item is discussion and possible vote to reappoint the following Selectmen appointees, expiring June 30th, 2025, for three-year terms to expire June 30th, 2028. I thought what I could do is name the position individually, and then we can vote on them as a group. Is that okay with the Board? Okay, do we need a motion on that? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, I'll go by this, position by position. Planning Board, the Chair, Daniel Morn; zoning Board of Appeals, Chair, Jason Pieter; Conservation Commission, Chair, Richard Parent; and Co-Vice-Chair, Robin Jewell; Water and Sewer Commission, Vice Chair, Earl Gabor; Member, Mark Becker; Historical Commission, Chair, Ted Avalas; Cable Advisory Committee, Member, Greg Robert; and Member Angelo Svetis; Council on Aging, Member Rose Silvestri; Secretary, Leanne Majersik; Member Marilyn Udo Vico; and the Vice Chair, Stasha Beach; Public Safety Committee, Chair, Kennedy Pizzetti; the Vice Chair, Paul Congdon; Police Chief, Mike Shaw; and Member, Gordon Wentworth; Fire Chief, Jeff Saad, Member, Ted Avalas; Trustees of the Soldiers' Monuments, Member, Albert Beeland; Economic Development Committee, Board of Selectmen, Appointee, Tom Klebert; Cultural Chair, Co-Chair, Carol Marshan; SWCC, Board of Directors, Webster Bureau Board of Selectmen, Alternate Delegate, Bill Gabor. So, could I have a motion to approve all of the, all of the Selectmen's appointments for the positions that have been named?
Did I, did I miss something? Is Jeff Fire Chief now?
I did.
Yeah, that's a member of the Public Safety Committee. As a member of the Public Safety Committee. Oh, did he, no, he's not.
He's labeled here as Fire Chief.
Okay, that's, that's a typo, yes.
Do you want a motion, and then we'll discuss it?
Yes.
I move that we approve the names of the people for the committees that have been read.
Second.
Just want to correct that as Deputy Chief.
I have a couple of questions. First, I'm assuming everybody said yes on this list. Like coerce some people into action here, but, okay. And in the second, just a question, is, is there, there's not a Board of Selectmen person on the Public Safety Committee?
Well, the Public Safety Committee, as I understand it, is really, it borderline just an internal committee. When there are complaints from the public or questions, you know, they would, they would, you know, if necessary convene some sort of formal meeting. But most situations that come, you know, of public safety nature are just dealt with in a regular administrative manner in the same, you know, so they, they only meet, I think, quarterly. It's more of a kind of a perfunctory type meeting. So, I think there was a time when there was a little more formality to it. But for the most part, anything that comes to, you know, to that committee is more internal administrative in nature rather than something that requires a.
So, it's not like this hazard mitigation.
No, it's not.
Plan, do we need to exercise?
It's really, for the most part, it's responding to complaints. And most complaints, questions, they're, they're just handled. They're not handled in the need for a committee-type environment. And I, originally Ted Avalas was included in his capacity as a school representative, I think, going back in time, and he was a school business manager. And I don't know the history beyond that. In fact, we had, when we had a conversation about this in my office, talking about the agenda, part of the conversation was, well, what, is this even necessary?
Yeah, I guess I'm moving into the same question.
Right. Because if something comes, you know, to the town, you know, the police chief, fire chief, they're not going to wait to call a meeting. You know, they're going to do their, do their job and deal with it. You know, so it's a, so the question does come up as to whether or not it's still relevant, but I don't know that that's a discussion for today in terms of the Board making a decision right now as to whether that's the case.
I, I do know as a Selectmen, people have, you know, brought concerns to my attention, and I've conveyed that.
Sure.
For the Safety Committee to evaluate.
If we had a motion? Yes, we do. Yeah. So, all those in favor of approving the Selectmen's appointments that are expiring on June 30th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is the discussion of the results of the Town Administrator Evaluation. And what I'd like to do here, summarize the T evaluation completed for the past year for Rick Raffond. I'd like to also highlight some of the strengths that were mentioned by the, by the Board for each section, along with some suggestions for improvements that were provided by the Board also. The overall evaluation was, was once again excellent. Rick had 4.64 out of a possible 5.0, and I think that's excellent. Last year, it was 37.4 out of 4, which was pretty equivalent. It's, it's hard to measure the exact difference between the two, because last year, we were, we were basing his evaluation on 4.00 instead of 5, which is what we did this year. First of all, the, and I'll, I'll take it by the categories. Relationship with the Board of Selectmen, he was a 4.58. His strengths overall, Rick works well with the Board, keeping members of the Board informed on current issues and emergencies as they arise, and carries out directives of the Board. He provides sound advice to the Board when needed, using judgment based on his 30-plus years of experience. Suggestions that were made by members of the Board for improvement. Rick could, should review the annual goals with the Board on a more regular basis. And this was, most of the Board members, it added this on their evaluation. Rick could recommend areas where rejuvenation, creation, or elimination of the Board is needed, and perhaps invite committee members to meet with the Board. For staff and personnel, personnel relationships, he got a 4.71, which is really high. He's done a good job recruiting and hiring personnel. He's done a good job recruiting and hiring personnel, and also develops plans to replace important positions whenever possible. He works well with the town unions to update union contracts, and there were no suggestions there. For community relationships, he got a four point five seven out of five. His strengths were, Rick does a good job listening to concerns of town residents and always attempts to provide response to issues raised by the public. He works well with regional, state, and federal agencies and with other communities, as highlighted by his chair in the Mass Strategic Health Group. Suggestions for improvement by the board, Rick could improve media relationships by looking for opportunities to provide the media positive stories to be published, finding more ways to interact with other business organizations, and create innovative solutions to attract business would be commendable. For the category of business and finance, he, he got a four point seven three out of five, which was really commendable, that's very high. Rick works well with the town treasurer to develop a budget that's comprehensive yet easy to compromise in. He makes good use of the funds available to the town based on the current priorities of the town, and he does a good job of using the town's free cash while preserving a good balance in the account. The fifth category, leadership, professional development, and personal qualities, Rick got a sound four point six three. His strengths, as identified by the board, by members of the board, Rick's considerable experience in municipal government is important in having good judgment when making decisions. He also consults experts when necessary to address issues. Rick is always professional and composed, however, under that calm, composed demeanor, he is firm and assertive. Rick pursues his role as TA with a high level of integrity, ethics, and honesty, and I, I thought those were good strengths that were identified by the board, and I commend you for a really fine year again. I think you've done a great job. And anybody else have any comments?
Through the chair, I would number one echo the congratulations and the thank you for everybody for the job well done. And I'd like to say that, we've talked about this before, though, when it comes to the goals, I think, I think it's a shared responsibility, and I don't think the board's been particularly good at, number one, figuring out the difference between goals and tasks, and communicating those, and then finding that we have a way to make sure that we identify the goals as goals, and then maybe some sort of an update. So I think that's a shared responsibility.
And I think we have to ask Rick that we do it on a more regular basis, and we can't just leave it up to Rick to bring it forward. It's our responsibility to, to make sure that the goals that we've set for the year are reviewed every once in a while.
I think it's an absolute delight to work with you. I mean, we're really fortunate to have you here, and I'll just make one comment on the goals. We're going to be in another interim year this year while planning is going on. Hopefully, in a year or so, when we have a master plan, a strategic plan, it'll be a lot easier just to pull the goals out and then track them through the year, but that isn't going to happen, this is going to take another year.
Well, I want to thank the board, obviously. I'm pleased with, with the results of the evaluation and, you know, like, I know it sounds, you know, a little bit of a keen phrase, but, but you can't be successful without good people around you, and we have a great organization here, some of which I was able to facilitate, a good chunk of it was in place when I got here, and I think that the political stability in this town is rather almost unprecedented right now, which allows not just me, but allows everybody to do their job. There's nothing worse than an organization that has to, everybody's got to be looking over their shoulder and have to be considering the politics of every single thing they do. It's not a healthy environment, so I think, you know, the board has created a healthy environment, and I think that shows in my evaluation, but I think it shows trickle down through the whole organization, so. So again, thank you for your comments, and I hope that next year, somewhere in the, you know, four point nine six range would be maybe a little more appropriate, but one of the things we did discuss, and obviously not, not necessarily worth getting into now, but after going through kind of a evaluation of the evaluation process, I think we all agreed, you know, maybe this isn't a great overall approach, period, where we're ranking and putting in numbers, I mean, you have to have some, I don't know, maybe some quantitative way to, to address evaluations, but I don't, but maybe you don't, I don't, I don't know. So I just think, you know, last year we kind of thought we'd, you know, step it up a bit, and when all was said and done, I think we all said, well, maybe we didn't, maybe we're off track a little bit. So I think going into next year, next year's process, maybe we can all kind of find a little different approach.
Elaine and I had talked about the process that we have right now, decided to, I think we've made a few changes, decided to take it and continue to use it this year, but take another look at it and see if there isn't some other way to do it besides this numeric approach that we, we take. It's, the problem I have with this numeric approach is that for some people, excellent is, would be four point nine five and above, and for other people, excellent would be four point eight five, and so you get a difference of opinion. One person could give you a four point eight five, one could give you a four point nine five, they both mean it's excellent, but if you take a look at the pure numbers, there is a difference. So we're going to take a look at, at what we're doing right now, and we would like to think about what, when you took it this year again and did the work, what could be different, and what we're thinking of is, is making it, not, not making it an numeric approach.
With our department heads, well, three years ago now, three years ago, we did kind of put aside the numerical process, and we have a more of a, just an internal goals, goals setting, goal review, it's all very narrative and conversational, it's not something that, that results in numbers, and, and I think, safe to say, I think we found it very, very, very helpful. You learn a lot when you approach it in a little bit of a different manner, when it's, you know, the good, the bad, the, the challenges, the day-to-day, the larger challenges, and having, you know, to some extent, you know, you don't necessarily need a process to do that, but, but it does help to facilitate and ensure that that happens, and it's worked out really well with our department heads, a little bit of a different format. Now, once again, how you, you know, turn that into an evaluation, that's, that's, that's a little bit of the challenge, but I'm sure if we want to do that, we'll find some way to do that.
I, I think Tom knows I'm not a fan of numbers in an evaluation, and I really think the onus is on us to be able to really take maybe some of these categories and say, you know, what has Rick do really well, where are there some challenges coming up, where do we need to change also? So, anyway, we're committed to looking at it again and
We are.
Working with you.
And, and we have a very challenging year coming up, as you know, just from, we're going to have to deal with a new fire chief, you know, well, deal with, but we're going to be, have a new fire chief, we're going to have to go through a planning process to hire a planner, and considering the magnitude of those two jobs in the transition, particularly for a planner, it's, it's, and how that impacts the rest of the organization, that's going to be in itself a challenge that I wish, that I wish we didn't have to deal with, but, but it is, that's what happens.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I can say the same, thank you for each, each one of you, individually and collectively.
You know, Rick, you used to have a boss, you used to always say to me, Mark, no problem, no job, so.
Well, you know, it gets to the point where you don't even consider things problems, it's just what you do, you know, and I can create plenty myself.
That's part of the point.
That's right, so. I try not to create problems just so I can solve them, though.
We're fortunate to have you here, because they're not problems.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator Report. And let's see. Our Curaleaf Processing Facility, you know, there wasn't that long ago you did, there was a hearing, I mean, a community outreach meeting, I think you've, I think all the board members got some communication from citizens on that, I know we discussed it at a, at a board meeting, and just as a culmination of that, the HCA, House Community Agreement waiver is in process, and it's anticipated that that should be approved any time now by the CCC. And two positive things that could come, come from this, the cultivation space that is currently utilized, some of that would be used for the, for the other purpose here of research and development, that should help alleviate some of the odor concerns from the location, and, you know, it will increase, should anticipate some, some additional jobs, and now, obviously, we have no ability to, you know, dictate if those would be Webster residents or not, but in terms of, you know, every little bit helps, and there should be some additional personal property tax dollars that come from a new facility, but, but just as an update, that that is, should be reaching the end of its requirements with the Cannabis Control Commission, and you might start to see some activity up there within the next month or two. And for Bartlett, I don't know how many of you have gone by, I know some of you kind of made this a regular, regular trek, and although it's not a pretty site, there is at this moment compliance with the, with the building, building zoning. The zoning, obviously, as you know, you know, they have that property that splits between residential and commercial, which means it's all residential, in terms of how it's interpreted through the bylaws, so there's no equipment up there, commercial equipment. There was some regrading that needed to be done so as to alleviate some of the safety issues on the property line, so as of right now, there is compliance. We are in a, I've been told by council that should he revert to non-compliance, we're not starting all over again, we can go in immediately with a contempt filing, rather than starting the process over again. That was some of my concern from the beginning is, and we've seen this where somebody, okay, so they're compliant, okay, so now it's all over, it's done with, and now we start all over again, so I've been assured that that is not the case, because, you know, I don't mean to be cynical, but based upon the history of this location, I would almost be surprised if, if we're done with our court action, so, but, but you know what, I certainly give, commend our Building Commissioner, and if I could pronounce his name, I would, I'm sorry. Marosha, Sebastian Marosha, for his, his diligence when he took over this enforcement from, from the prior Building Commissioner. So, keep our fingers crossed, but I don't want anybody to think that, that this is over and done with, I think we've, it's sad that it's taken over three years to get here, and some of that is, is, you know, because of the court system, some of that is, is because of how long it took us to get some documentation, some of that was because of the transition in the, in the enforcement position, and some of it, you know, I, you can't help but say that some of it is because there is a predisposition to be supportive of people's personal property rights, and that's not a bad thing. Unfortunately, it doesn't help the timeliness of enforcement, but I think we also, you know, we have to recognize that, and the, you know, and we tell people, you know, there's a lot of residents in town who have issues, complaints about neighbors, and a lot of those are legitimate, but we do tell people, and if there's anybody who's, who's paying attention to this particular meeting, it takes a lot of time for enforcement, a lot of time, and it's very frustrating at our level, we're probably more frustrated than anybody that it takes so long to, to deal with enforcement. So, we do try to, when we do get complaints, we, we do try to educate people a bit as to, well, what this means from an enforcement standpoint, and I think when people understand that, you know, they don't like it either, but, but they're understanding, and they're, they're willing to be, be a little bit patient, so this is one of those situations that we're happy people were a little bit patient with, I think we were very impatient by the end, we didn't feel like we were getting the action out of the court system that we had hoped for as quickly, but, but we understand why, we understand why, and so we. In our town meeting, I think, as we all know, everything went, went, I think, about as well as you could hope. I, you know, the, the point I want to make here, and I think it's been made before, and I think it's something we should make forever, is the overall cooperation between our departments and, and our school department, and I mention in here that, you know, we, we, for the sake of ease, we like to, you know, refer, the reference of town and, you know, the school department and the towns, and we are the same town, we are, we're not different towns, the school department is, is the largest of our departments, and yes, there is, you know, an autonomy that comes with state law for school districts, however, I, the school department doesn't see themselves as a different organization, and that's not the case everywhere. And I think we all, we all cultivate that, I think the school committee cultivates that, and we also have the privilege of, I'm not sure the rights, you know, of looking at some of our neighbors and seeing some of the, the fracturing and dysfunction that comes when, when we don't have these, you know, these great relationships, and, and you see it not just in the budget process, but you see the involvement with other, you know, school activities and, you know, the building committee, where there's such a tight bond between town officials, whatever department, or whatever, whether they're selectmen or school committee or, or department heads, and I, I'd like to think that's, that's universal, but it's not, it's not universal, so, yeah. So I, I want to make that clear, and I want to make that clear specifically because I want to thank the school department for, for being so diligent in understanding of our overall budget process and our financial condition. And I also want to commend, you know, Tim, Courtney, Monique, Lisa, and our other financial staff for, you know, help guiding this process. And I say at a town meeting, you know, it culminates with a few pieces of paper on a table, but the work that goes into getting those few pieces of paper on the table is, is extreme, and it takes many, many months, and it's nice that it can easily be overlooked, that's a good thing, that's a good thing that it, that it can be overlooked, that means I think we're doing it pretty well, so.
Rick, can I make a comment about the town and the school? I mean, this year, I don't know if it was done in the past, but the school made a, intentionally invited Board of Selectmen to both the award ceremony at Bartlett and the graduation, and I wish every citizen in Webster could have been at those, because the joy, the support for their fellow students was immense, and I know Tom and Scott and I were at these, and we just, it, it's our town, it's our kids, it's our students, and we are one town.
Well, I think that's a good way to close this topic, Elaine, thank you. And something has not gone right here. I'm looking at my my notes. Okay, well, why don't I move beyond this?
You want a hard copy?
Please. What am I missing here? Oh, I think, I think word process struck again on me here, so, okay, now I'm with you, okay, I didn't, I didn't label it. I did want to point out that, first of all, I admit that I cut and pasted a little this from, because Camille was telling me about her designation onto the Special Commission on Local and Regional Public Health, established in two thousand sixteen, and quite frankly, I thought it was pretty impressive that she was nominated, asked to serve on this, on this commission, so I suggest, well, I, I asked her if she could write me an email describing this so that I could share it with the board, and I'm, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I am just going to note that the commission was established in two thousand sixteen to assess the effectiveness and efficiency of municipal and regional public health systems. The commission concluded its work with recommendations for improved effectiveness and efficiency of local public health protections in June of two thousand nineteen. Now, as you can see how fast state government works, that was two thousand nineteen, it's now two thousand twenty, twenty-five, but the end of two thousand twenty-four is when the, the commission was established, and as I mentioned, Camille, our Webster's Health Director, was nominated, and I know it was with a little bit of reluctance, like, like most of us, it's just one more thing, but I think you know that as the lead community, she has been essentially the, the leader of multiple regional regional efforts, public health, that definitely benefit Webster. It's not just, you know, being nice on her part. So I think that we should recognize her, and I think that, I think it says a lot for Webster, certainly a lot about her, but I think it recognizes Webster's leadership since Camille has been here. And the fact that she is recognized regionally and beyond in terms of her expertise and diligence. So I want to congratulate her, and I thought it'd be good for the board to know such things. Veterans office closure. The good news is that Veterans Office is going to be getting a new roof, and it will be closed from Monday, June 9th through June 16th for that, for that replacement. And I think the board's all aware now that there was a donation of a tarot from Home Depot. There was a donation of effort and expertise and labor from Rudnick Roofing. I'm not sure that you heard Rudnick Roofing. They may not even like the fact that I'm mentioning them tonight. And it was organized and paid for by a local not-for-profit. And quite frankly, the gentleman who approached me is, I understand, a long-term citizen of the town and been involved in many things. I didn't know who he was, and he didn't want to tell me who the not-for-profit is. We have made sure that we have the appropriate information from Rudnick Roofing for liability purposes. But I don't want to get into administrative mumbo jumbo. We certainly want to thank Rudnick and want to thank Home Depot for their, for their effort. And I, it's my understanding that this was actually, you know, to the, you know, to compliment the benefactor, this was actually brought to the town. Town wasn't soliciting, you know, but this was brought to the town as a project. It was, the need was recognized. So to have such a significant project done at no cost to the town is really, really impressive. So I know that Steve Rogers, our health, our veteran services agent, he's going to be having to, you know, work around it and manage that process to some extent. And he will be working out of the Dudley office, which is, you know, the home office, so to speak, from that June 9th through June 16th timeframe. So good news, and we'll take it. Something else for the board to keep their sights on, I don't know to what extent people follow some of the, you know, the legislative, legislative process of the state. I hope most of you have better things to do, okay, for the, for the most part. However, there are some proposed liquor licensing amendments. They're proposed, but through the Senate budget, not necessarily. They haven't been approved yet through the, through the House and ultimately by the governor. But effectively, what this legislation would do is it would return control to municipalities for any additional liquor licenses. To some extent, you know, I guess it would be close to what towns have had to do for special legislation. You know, to the extent that you want to have licenses over and above your existing quota, you could develop a plan by the licensing authority in town, that's the Board of Selectmen, and forward that to the ABCC. And you'd be able to operate under that plan for any licenses over and above, you know, whether it's through economic development in a downtown area, whatever, whatever purpose that a local jurisdiction would find necessary or helpful. So, so this is, considering how cumbersome it can be, and you've all been through this, with the special legislative licenses here in Webster, and the restrictions, and the, quite frankly, the strategy that the board has to work to maintain licenses and not lose licenses when, you know, there's a consideration, some of which you shouldn't even have to have. But I think the returning such a, you know, control to the local government, even though there's still going to be some, you know, some oversight by the, by the state, is it would be a real, real positive development. It's also my understanding that the tight state control is, goes back to the end of prohibition. And it's, it's good to see how, how quick things change with local governments. So that's. And our treasure collector's office is now complete. Those of you who haven't been there, I encourage you to go down there and take a look. I know we've had plenty of conversations and some tongue-in-cheek remarks about ways in which it's no, hasn't been conducive to serving the public anymore. But those of you who haven't had a chance to go down and take a look, I urge you to do that. I certainly urge you to pay your taxes while you're in there, too, to see if, see if everything works right.
Sorry, I stopped it on the, I came here a few minutes early, and I couldn't believe, I thought I was in the wrong office. It was, they did a really good job. The mural on the wall, and I forgot my check, so I have to pay my taxes another time.
I'll bring it down there later.
I hope they have before pictures, just to see the drastic change between what it was and what it is. Oh, yeah. The cages.
And there was one other thing that I left the memo downstairs that I wanted to report to the board, but I will forward that to you at a later date. It has to do with the Conservation Commission's, you know, their first award, their leadership award, Conservation Leadership Award. They have, they decide who they're going to award that to in July. And like I said, I was going to pre-announce that this evening, but I have, again, left that email downstairs. I could find it here, but in the interest of time, that would be a little awkward. That's all I have tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I just ask Rick one question. Is there any, I just lost the name of the street. Is there any update on the development in Connecticut? I just can't believe I lost the name of the street.
No, other than we still have, I believe it was about a week and a half ago, communication with our attorney, Connecticut attorney. And as of right now, there is, there is going to be a motion for summary, for dismissal by the, by the owner of the property, but that hasn't happened yet. So we still have, we still have two appeals pending. As far as I'm concerned, let them pen. Let them pen as much as, as it takes, so.
One more question? Could I have one more question? Do we have any updates on the Route 16 work?
I'm sorry, Elaine, I know you did mention, I think, via email.
Yeah.
See if we could try to get some updates on our website rather than just the, the state website. I mean, I get regular updates as to the plan for the next week, but it's written in, you know, DOT speak.
Oh, that wouldn't be good.
It's not very helpful.
Yeah. We don't have a timeline to say, in such and such a time, they're going to switch to this, and.
I'll see what I can get. Like I said, what I see right now is DOT speak, and it's a situation where I ask, you know, Mr. Pizzetti, if there's anything that, that he thinks I should know. And to, the challenge right from the beginning for us was really, you know, you know, traffic control, you know, details, traffic flow, more so than, you know, the construction issues. I know that the major one for, I think, to the town had to do with the water, the water part of it going under the project that was, well, we were going to have a major pipe buried for the next, you know, multiple generations if it, so fortunate the commission was able to make note of that and address that with DOT before that, that happened. So, so from a, purely from a local standpoint, I think that was the biggest news, the biggest thing to overcome. But in terms of ongoing timelines, I'll, I'll see if we can get something that can be sanitized for, for our own website consumption.
I think it would be really appreciated. And I know I, I've had many scenic routes to the countryside that I hadn't planned on.
Yes, you learn things that you, and some of which you wish you didn't.
Sir, the chair, I would like to mention that the, the water and sewer lines are pretty much in place, and they did have to cross the road under the bridge. So that's why, and ran up. So there's a lot of stone and metal plates and all that. They're saying that it should be switched over in the fall. The water should be switched over in the fall. So there'll be notices coming out.
Yeah, that was, that would have been a problem.
Yeah.
That would have been a problem, so.
And also, to the chair, the most frequent question I get is that, how long is this going to take? You know, to Elaine's point, so.
Well, we are talking about, about some fall of 2027. But those timelines, timelines, obviously, everything, you know, weather dependent.
Right.
And otherwise. But I will, I will get something that's, again, in human speak, that, that we can all understand, even me, that would be suitable.
I suspect that it's probably going to get worse before it gets better as they actually configure the road or if it's going to be decorated. Of course, I have to admit, half those questions are from my wife, so.
It does impact the citizens in KP area.
Did I mention, Mike, did I mention those are really good questions?
Yes.
Tell her I said that.
Do you have a discussion on this?
Make a motion, we accept.
Do I? Can I have a motion for acceptance of the town administrator?
So moved.
Second.
You can second.
Any additional discussion on the report? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Vacancies for Board of Selectmen appointments. The Finance Committee has one full member. Water and Sewer Commission has one full member. Historical Commission has three full members that are needed. And Sony Board of Appeals has one alternate member that's needed. Future events, on Thursday, July 3rd, 2024, we'll have the Fire Worth Celebration, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Memorial Beach. And the proposed future meeting date is Monday, July 14th, 2025, 6:00 PM, Selectmen's Meeting Room, 350 Main Street, Second Floor, Webster, Mass.
So, Mr. Chair, I just family planned a 50th wedding anniversary celebration that week, so I will not be here, so.
Well, I will not be here that week either.
The rest of us better show up, but we won't be allowed to meet.
It's my wife's birthday, but, you know.
Is that Flag Day? I'll be here.
I'm going to be calling from July 7th to the 21st.
Well, it gives us plenty of time to decide if we need a meeting or if another date is.
So we got two. But I'll, I'll be there.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.